Yes, because it doesn't fully explain what the article.
Good evening and welcome to the Dayton Board of Selectmen Annual Public Information Session. It is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall. The Zoom meeting information is meeting ID 89091237745, passcode 743984. Phone login 19292056099. There will be public input allowed during the session and also at the conclusion of the informational section should anyone have a question they forgot to ask during the review of each article. There will be continued play on channel, Dayton Channel 9, and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdighton. And also, this meeting will be recorded. Could I ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will ask Mr. Mullen to come to the podium to begin the discussion of the articles for the meeting next Monday. I believe it's at 6:00 PM.
Um, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
I'm in the DI auditorium. And so, yeah, DI, um, so prepping the planning for the annual town meeting. It has been about, it has been about five months worth of work, which is really culminating on Monday, June 6th, our annual town meeting. And I really want to thank everyone in all of our departments and our residents who, who has been a part of the last five or so months. I'll get like having us here tonight as we plan forward to the annual town meeting on, on June 6th, which is Monday night. I do, I might, I do have slides here, which is, which have also been already, which have, which have already been uploaded on the town website, on the town homepage. But so any resident who wants to access this, I can log on to the town homepage and they can find this whole presentation there already. But just really, just, just really as an, just really as an overview of, oh, I always do this, God is not good to me. Just really as an overview of what, of what Dayton residents should expect to see on the warrant. We do, we do have a 41 article warrant that does include the town's, that does include the town's fiscal year 2023 proposed $24 million operating budget, like that has a 3% overall increase like over fiscal year 2022, which is the year we're in now. The FY '23 operating budget, the FY '23 operating budget will be a recalibrated core service, will be a recalibrated core services-driven budget that continues our commitment to responsibly meet the needs of town residents. There were various, there were various warrant articles, as you'll see, that reflect the rank priorities of, of the Capitol Outlet Committee. However, financial, however, our financial limitations only allow a few to be proposed for funding at this time. You'll note that Article 30, it seeks approval for the town to acquire the historic building and property located at 207 Main Street to serve as a new home of the Dayton Public Library. And the remaining, in the remaining warrant articles, which we will go through tonight, include proposals to fund, to fund an elementary and middle school feasibility study. They include, they include various zoning-related articles. And also a proposed article to increase the senior tax exemption from $750 to $1,000 per year. So, um, 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 so starting with the warrant article, one is pretty self-explanatory. Article one is where the, Article one is where the residents at town meeting will hear reports from town officials. That is pretty self-explanatory. Article two proposes to allow the selectmen to appoint all the necessary town officials and board and committee members for fiscal year 2023. So this includes boards and committees like the Khan Club, the Board of Health, the, the, the zoning Board of Appeals, the zoning Board of Appeals, the zoning Board of Appeals and various town employees as well. So that is, so that is Article 2. That is, that, that is also a routine article that is on every, that is on every annual town meeting warrant. In Article 3, we have the payment of fiscal year 2021 unpaid bills. Like in this article would fund the payment of approximately $6,400 in unpaid bills from, from fiscal year 21 due to invoices being received after the close of the fiscal year. Yes? Um, it is.
69.
Sorry, there's a typo. So, yeah, 6,900. So I'm sorry, like I inverse that number.
Yep.
I apologize.
As we look at Article 3, I do have a question. I've had several residents ask me this question. They were particularly interested to know why the national security bill, which is substantial, was not paid during the fiscal year? Or why is it being paid now and not?
So, um, so, so, so the, so the national, the National Alama Security, that is the security company for town hall and old town hall. And they, and they actually sent us the invoice, I believe in December of, of 2021, which, which was well past the July 15th, the cutoff date for us really to process those bills. Yeah, like when we reached out to them, like when, when they sent us the invoice. And, you know, did explain that we wouldn't have the ability to fund that until we got to town meeting. But that is really the genesis of how that came forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pacheco, Article 4?
I'll do Article 4. Set salaries for elected town officials for fiscal year 2023, and that's based on Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws. It includes proposed salary increases for town clerk from $65,000 to $73,000 informed by survey of similarly suited communities provided by town clerk. Proposed salary for new treasurer-collector of $76,000 informed also by survey of similarly suited communities provided by the former treasurer-collector. And the Board of Selectmen recommends Article 4.
Thank you. Article 3 will require a four-fifths vote for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, whatever.
As we go through the articles, if anyone has any questions on a specific article, please raise your hand and we will entertain your question. Article 5, fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budget. The proposed operating budget will be a recalibrated core services-focused budget that continues town's commitment of responsibility, meeting the needs of the town residents. Conservative-based budgeting would ensure that the town's fiscal '23 operating position and excess levy capacity, which is different from the town's tax levy limit and actual tax levy, would closely mirror that of FY '19. Budget increases include a $345,000 increase in combined education assessments for DI, Bristol-Aggie, and BP, a $100,000 increase in trash recycling pickup and disposal costs, $96,000 for a 1% increase, and additional enrollment in employee health insurance, and a one-time retirement separation cost. Thank you.
The, the FY '23 budget, just really quickly, it also in Article 5, it does include, it does include proposed funding, it does include proposed funding for transition funding in the, and the treasurer-collector's office, including for FY '22 closeout efforts in the amount of $8,000. It does include streamlined, it does include streamlined and strengthening, unstrengthened town human resources efforts through the administrators and the Board of Selectmen Office. It does include, it does include a proposed adjustment in wages for the animal control officer, a position that is currently funded less than minimum wage for hours' work. And as was just mentioned, the budget does include, does include one-time, does include one-time retirement cost for longtime fire, police, library, for fire, police, library, and primetime employees, which are proposed to be funded, which are proposed to be funded using free cash. Like it also includes a budget, also includes funding for the Dayton Council on Aging to expand programming for services to a greater number of Dayton seniors, along with maintaining primetime programming as part of the COA, as part of the COA operations. And I just wanted to define what, like, what actually free cash means because it, because it's actually a misnomer, and I just wanted to explain for the public. And free cash is a portion, is a portion of unreserved fund balance available for incorporation. It is not cash, but rather, but rather is the total, but rather is the total of a cash unreceivable, as less the current liabilities and earmarked reserves are also reduced by reserves for, for uncollected taxes. This is also referred to as available cash. And this amount is certified annually by DOR, which is the Department of Revenue.
Thank you.
Peter?
Mr. Karen, Article 6?
Administration of Sewer Enterprise Funded by Sewer Commission for Fiscal Year '23. Routine warrant article annually adopted at ATM. Establish the budget for the sewer department enterprise funded for fiscal year '23.
I just have to let someone?
I may want to note that the Board of Selectmen recommends passage of this article.
I'm sorry, bear with me on my, on my mouse. Sorry. I thought it was going to be good to me tonight.
Yeah.
So one of the things in the new budget we are going to invest in is better mice or mouses.
Okay.
Article 7, Mr. Pacheco?
Sure. Article 7, Establishment of Fiscal Year 2023. Departmental revolving funds. Routine warrant article annually adopted at annual town meeting required by state law. Revolving funds established for Dayton Public Library trustees and the Council on Aging Board of Directors. It includes respective departmental spending limits, and this is recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Article 8, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction and further allow the Board of Selectmen to sell through the sealed bid process according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 16. All properties which the town has legally acquired by tax title or take any action relative thereto. This is a routine warrant article, and it's annually adopted at town meeting. Authorization is required by state law, and the Board of Selectmen recommends its passage. Mr. Karen, Article 9?
Article 9, authorizes town treasurer slash Board of Selectmen to borrow funds in anticipation of fiscal year revenue collections. Routine warrant article annually adopted at ATM as required by state law. Town's revenue flow was historically not, not, revenue anticipated, anticipation notes, but this article safeguards town's ability to pay bills. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Article 10. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes. Article 10, authorize expanding state Chapter 90 funds for town roadway capital improvements. Routine warrant article annually adopted at annual town meeting. State-driven funding formula based on local road mileage, 58.33% population, 20.83% unemployment of mileage of 58.33% population, 20.83% unemployment, 20.83%. And the Board of Selectmen recommends.
Thank you. Articles 11 through 13. Authorizes town through the Board of Selectmen to make changes in grade, take land by eminent domain, and settle damages related to roadway capital improvements. Make changes in grade, obtain easements, purchase land, et cetera, for highway maintenance and bridge reconstruction projects. Also to hold auctions to dispose of surplus property and equipment. And all articles are routine articles required by state law. The Board of Selectmen recommends passage of Articles 11 through 13. Mr. Karen, could you take Article 14?
Sure. Article 14, applies cost-of-living allowance to veterans and surviving spouses, property tax exemption. Routine warrant article annually adopted at ATM as required by state law. Again, the Board of Selectmen recommends.
Mr. Pacheco?
Article 15 establishes projected Community Preservation Committee, CPC revenues for fiscal year 2023. Routine warrant article annually adopted at annual town meeting required by state law, and the Board of Selectmen recommends.
Article 15 will also require recommendation by the Community Preservation, by the community, Community Preservation Committee.
Yes. Article 15 will require a recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee. Actually, the next, Article 15 and the following two articles as well as, three articles, I'm sorry.
15 through 18 will all require recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
Now, just to clarify that, Mr. Dinkus, they will read the article plus have to state a recommendation, or will just reading it be the recommendation?
They need to make a recommendation on the article, just like the Selectmen would do.
Thank you. Article 16?
I, yeah, we do have the, we do have the chairwoman from the, from the Historical Commission here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, I'll read it first and then I'll let Mrs. Gales speak about it. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 from the Historical Resources Reserve to be expended by the Community Preservation Commission for the hiring of a preservation consultant to complete the Dayton Community-Wide Survey Project, Phase 2, to update the listing of historic resources in town or take any action relative thereto. The Board of Selectmen recommends passage of this article? Mrs. Gales, do you have anything?
If you have to direct the question. First of all, continues.
If you could come to the, yes.
Yes.
For the people on Zoom, if you could come up, people listening, oh, here on TV land, it's easy because the microphone is right here.
This article continues the Historical Commission's work on updating the documentation of our historic properties. We're entering the final phase of our project this year, and I'm really impressed with the work that we've gotten, so this is an important piece to continue doing. This particular focus this time will be on forms for the Mount Hope Finishing Company area and the North Dayton Village. Mount Hope Finishing Company, as we know, is a really impressive historic business that we had here in Dayton that affected a lot of our history, and it is really like one of a kind because of the way it was a planned community. So approximately 90 to 100 forms will be completed by a preservation consultant. And using these updated forms, it gives us a good picture of the history, kind of like a snapshot of it. You know what you have to document more, and it also is a driving force as to what needs to be preserved, and it helps us to continue to preserve Dayton's rich history, and it adds to our whole cultural landscape. So we feel it's a very important project. We're really excited about moving forward with more documentation of our resources.
Mrs. Gales, thanks. I, I do have a question, and then I'll ask if you could stay up for Article 17. I've been asked, especially by a lot of the newer residents in town, could you define the village? You know, because I usually don't say to them, it is, it is very historical.
It is.
My dad was a big part of that back during the early 50s, J.K. Milliken.
There's actually like two sections. One is like the Mount Hope Finishing Company Village, and that's all around the plant. What is Oasis is in there now and a few other companies. Prior to that, Raytheon was there. Many of Dayton's residents worked for Raytheon, so it's always been a part of that particular building, a part of the community. However, the village is, there's like the green that's there that was designed by the Olmstead Brothers, and the plant community, which is a lot of the houses that are off in Bedford Street and back there, Andrews Street, Chase Street, it even goes up Summer Street and down Spring a little bit. Then you have the North Dayton Village, which is more centered on the forms that we have along Lincoln Avenue and up School Street, which I didn't really know because I always thought when they said Mount Hope and talked about the village, like you, growing up here, they meant all around the manufacturing plant. So there's really kind of distinction. So it's really fascinating when you start, you know, reading about it, and it's like an amazing project that they did, what Milliken did, so.
Thank you. If you could stay up, because we're now going to do the Article 17. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from the Historic Resources Reserve as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to be expended by the town clerk for the preservation of eight vital record books, to include restoration, long-term storage of books, both book scanning and the reduction of two copies of said vital records, take any action relative thereto. The Board recommends approval. Will this also involve the Historical Committee where they are historic resource reserves?
These records, the vital records are under the town clerk's domain. However, he did come in and we did weigh in on it that the preservation was important to do. When you see these vital records, they go back to the beginning of the town. They're written in the old cursive writing of the time period in the 1700s, and they're really fascinating to see. So when people are doing like genealogy and they want to check, you know, the birth dates and the death dates or marriage dates of people, these are the books that Pam and Mark refer to to give them the information that they need. They really, I mean, they're incredible to see, and you don't, so you don't want people touching them, because the more you touch these kinds of records, the oils and everything, exposure to air just makes them disintegrate all that much more faster. So I think it's a fabulous project he's undertaking.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Karen, could you take Article 18?
Sure.
Oh, I'll zoom in, Peter.
$2,000, $210,000 CPC-funded article for North Dayton Playground Reconstruction. Funding would construct a new accessible and inclusive playground featuring play structures for a wide range of age groups. Utilize multiple surfaces such as artificial turf, engineered wood, fiber, and sand. In combination with the use of rubber matting, this will provide expanded accessibility and play opportunities. Construct a concrete walkway from existing parking area to the new playground to provide an accessible path. Install protective daggone along the outfield fence of the baseball field and install fencing along the front of the basketball court to protect the playground from stray balls. CPC funding to be leveraged with parks and recreation operating budget funding and in-kind contributions from the Highway Department to complete the purchase and installation of the new proposed playground. Project would include all associated needs like walkways and fencing. Board of Selectmen recommends.
I might add that this, this playground will, will also be fully ADA compliant.
Article 19. I'm going to read, even though the Board of Selectmen is asking, we take no action. Article 19, $106,146.76 for a second payment of seven-year new fire engine lease purchase. There's no second year payment due at this time. Production timeline of the new engine delayed making of, making of anticipated first payment to December of 2022. So the Board of Selectmen is recommending taking no action.
Thank you.
Do you plan to read the article at annual town meeting or just?
No, I just thought for the public, at least today. Well, we'll actually let the chairman decide whether or not he wants us to read it.
Article 20?
Article 20. $50,561.92 for the third-year Highway Department Street Sweeper lease payment, a third of a five-year lease payment schedule for the new Highway Department Street Sweeper approved at the June 2020 annual town meeting. And the Board of Selectmen recommends that it be paid through free cash, as does the Finance Committee.
Article 21, proposed funding for a new ambulance through, through first of three-year lease purchase. Continues the town's five-year ambulance replacement schedule. Funding, funded through ambulance fund dedicated revenue with no tax rate impact. And again, the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, recommends $122,000 from the ambulance fund, and the Finance Committee does the same.
Mr. Pacheco, Article 22?
Article 22, this is also, the Board of Selectmen is recommending taking no action. Proposed $150,000 to fund the fire station feasibility study. Feasibility study would include assessment of building property needs, fire department operational needs, building and property accessibility requirements, and related issues. Included as the Capitol Outlet Committee funding priority for fiscal year 2023. Not recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee at this time due to limited available funding revisit for the fall special town meeting.
Article 23? Article twenty-three. The proposed twelve-thousand-dollar purchase of transfer station roll-off containers. It's included as a capital outlay committee funding priority in fiscal year twenty-three. There is a need for new containers to accept tires, mattresses, et cetera, brought to the transfer station to prevent current roll-offs from falling in disrepair. The Board of Selectmen recommends that this be funded through raise and appropriation, and the Finance Committee concurs. Article twenty-four, Mr. Karen.
Proposed sixty-four thousand for a new police cruiser vehicle. A fully equipped police vehicle includes computer, firearm, patrol rifle, radio antenna, and related accessories. Included as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year twenty-three. Not recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee at this time. Revisit for a fall special town meeting. Board of Selectmen recommends taking no action.
Mr. Pacheco, Article twenty-five.
Article twenty-five, proposed five-thousand dollars for police station parking lot seal coating, including as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year 2023. Preventive maintenance for nearly five-year-old parking lot. There's a recommendation that the parking lots be sealed every five years. Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommends.
Article twenty-six. Proposed sixty-three thousand for Highway Department one-ton dump truck with plow. This would replace a two-thousand-two one-ton dump truck that has fallen into disrepair. Included as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year twenty-three. Not recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee at this time due to limited available funding. We will revisit this request for the fall special town meeting.
Is it the understanding on Article twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six? I understand the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen don't recommend. Do you participate in any motion on the floor from those or none whatsoever?
No, not that I know of. But thank you.
Mr. Karen, Article twenty-seven.
Forty-three thousand dollars for William Street slash Old William Street Godrail replacement would replace and reconstruct entire Godrail system on both sides of road slash intersection. Included as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year twenty-three. Board of Selectmen recommends, as so does the Finance Committee.
And one of the key concerns with this article was that it was a public safety issue and needed to be addressed. Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, Article twenty-eight.
Article twenty-eight. Proposed one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for Highway Department for purchase of a new F-750 dump truck and related accessories. Would replace the two-thousand-and-four F-750 dump truck that has developed significant engine issues. Included as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year 2023. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommends.
Before I read Article twenty-nine, I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Mullen for the efforts. As you can see by this presentation, it's very nice and easy to follow along, and it's helping to move the meeting along. Article twenty-nine, proposed ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the paving at School Lane, Lane Field, and tennis and basketball court parking lots. It's included as a capital outlay committee funding priority for fiscal year twenty-three. However, it's not recommended by the Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee at this time due to limited available funding, and we will revisit this at the fall special town meeting. Thank you. Article thirty.
Proposed acquisition of two-hundred-and-seven Main Street. Proposed cost-effective long-term solution to address longstanding Dayton Public Library needs. Nine-thousand-fourteen square foot total on two floors. Main level is forty-five-hundred square feet. Old Dayton Library was three-thousand square feet. Potential future programming on lower level. ADA compliant elements, compliant fire alarm, thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight square feet site, sixty-plus parking spaces, not in one-hundred-year flood zone, on mass Historical Commission inventory. Board of Selectmen recommends, so does the Finance Committee.
That there is, are there, are there is a continuation of that, so you can count as well?
Okay. Proposed acquisition, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand of ARPA funds to purchase property funded outside of the local tax rate. Town meeting approval for acquisition of property, not funding. Again, the Board of Selectmen recommends, Finance Committee recommends as well.
Article thirty-one.
Article thirty will require two-thirds majority vote.
The thirty, we've been told by council because it's only the acquisition and it doesn't include the funding, that it's a simple majority.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the library. Is that, once again, is that going to be three quarters or is that going to be my vote for the library?
By three quarters.
I mean, I'm sorry, how did it vote on the library that night?
It's a majority vote.
Majority, you are correct, it is a majority. All right, thank you, you're correct. Appreciate it.
Now, the next article, Article thirty-one, I believe is going to take a two-thirds vote.
Yes.
Hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for two-hundred-and-seven Main Street improvements would be used to fund exterior weatherization, improve accessibility entrances, and parking lot and grounds improvement. An anticipated Community Preservation Committee request would fund additional exterior interior improvements. Town is actively working to identify alternative state and federal funding sources. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommends, and we're asking that this come from a capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask if anyone has any questions for the Building Commissioner or Mr. Shea from Architect in Design for this project. Please feel free to ask for any questions you may have.
I have a question for mine. The ground basement is going to be used, proposed to be used for what in the future?
That's a terrific question. I want to thank you for asking it.
Sure.
I'm Joseph Shea with Granite City Partners, and I've been working closely with the town since November on the opportunity for a permanent library solution. The building itself at two-hundred-and-seven Main Street is nine-thousand square feet. Using round numbers, the, the main floor is four-thousand-five-hundred square feet and is, is ready to be pretty much moved in with some slight modifications that are part of the next article, Article thirty-one. The basement itself is also about four-thousand-five-hundred square feet. The basement right now is open space, however, it does not meet public standards for access and egress. So the philosophy that we have put together with our strategy is if Article thirty and thirty-one are approved, the town is already getting a new building ready to proceed with the library on the first floor only in a very cost-effective manner. There's also a number of historical preservation elements. The basement would be part of a Phase Two that could be used for a number of different uses. Could be public meeting space, which we know is in dire need. Could be additional library planning and programming space. Could be staff space in the library, thus unlocking some more public space upstairs. But the Article thirty and thirty-one actually stand alone on their merits of acquiring the parcel and moving the Dayton Public Library into the first floor. And then a future phase on what is the highest and best use for the town on the second floor is really all upside opportunity, is how I would describe it.
So there's no reason to dissect the, the funding because the lower level is above and beyond what's here?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Agia, at the last meeting, which I believe you were on vacation or were able to attend. We wanted to thank, or we did thank, those people who played a key role in helping to bring this project together, working with the church.
Well, thank you.
And I want, you know, Mr. Mullen, Mr. Pacheco, and yourself, thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. It's a long time coming. And I hope, I hope it's seen through, and I hope the Dayton taxpayers appreciate the effort that's gone into it and what, what we can do to permanently get the library a new home.
Now, it's also my understanding that there'll be in-kind services as people from both your department and Mr. Ferry's department will be working together to help with the construction of this.
Exactly. Just like we showed here at Old Town Hall and at Town Hall, which is still ongoing. Yes, we are going to have a key role in shaping the future of the building, working with the librarian, the library, the friends of the library, Mr. Shea and company. We really feel that we can transform that building into a useful, not just a library, but a public building. So it's an exciting project. I hope the taxpayers embrace the opportunity. And, you know, I've been here for a dozen years. We've been talking about this library. I got to tell you, I lost a lot of sleep when I first came to town. I visited our library on Main Street. I was very tough, and only recently did the fire chief and I put our feet down and say enough is enough. We need to fix this before somebody gets hurt. So, and the fact that this presented itself and we're able to do it what I think is in a fiscally responsible manner, I think we have a great opportunity. So I appreciate the support and the thanks.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
So if I, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, so I'm going to introduce Article thirty. I'm going to ask you to give me permission to speak on it. And if, with your permission, I'm going to ask that you allow Joe Shea to speak, and then you can have input from our board members or the public if you wish. But if that's okay with you, as well as Article thirty-one.
I just want to confirm, so Article thirty is majority. This is the non-fundamental article. Article thirty-one would be majority except for the fact we're funding the capital stabilization.
That's my understanding.
So two thirds. It's not the fact that the fund, or it's where we're funding it from.
Yeah. Ms. Padiris.
I just wanted to make a comment that there is a very helpful slideshow on the website so people don't fully understand what the project is to go on the website. That slideshow was very helpful. For the previous meeting, you guys were brutal. So if you don't know what it is, definitely look at it because it's very interesting.
Thank you for that.
Article thirty-two.
Is that me?
I believe so, yes.
Article thirty-two, proposed hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar feasibility study for DESDMS school campus. Needs analysis proposed by the, needs analysis proposed by the school committee and prioritized by capital outlay committee. Study would include an assessment of building and property needs, evaluation of enrollment trends, and building and property accessibility requirements and related issues. The Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee, recommends. If the public remembers, five years ago, four years ago, we had the purchased trailers for the elementary school. We're trying to avoid that. We're trying to project what the town's going to need for the future. So I would ask the town to support this article.
Little bit of background on this very important feasibility study. In two thousand, the Master Plan Committee recommended that in ten years, that they take a look and have a feasibility study because they anticipated with the growth of the town that there were going to be enrollment problems, and there were going to be structural problems, and there were going to be concerns about ADA compliance as they anticipated laws were going to be changed. That feasibility study was supposed to happen in two thousand and ten. It is now two thousand and twenty-two, and the needs are very, very much aware to everyone. This feasibility study takes into consideration all aspects of the campus. Buildings, land, fields, playgrounds, and roads. It's not just one aspect. It's the entire campus. Thank you.
So, yeah, we do, we do, we do have Rob Baxter. He is the school, he's the school business manager on Zoom. Rob, I'm not sure if you want to, I'm not sure if you want to provide any additional information.
Yeah, sure. I can answer any questions, but very, very simply, you know, Board of Selectmen Hall summarized it very nicely that this is, this would be the first step to looking at what the campus would need to facilitate the enrollment trends that are projected. And they're very, they're, they're very favorable. There's this significant growth in enrollment projected for the K through A. So, and then this would be looking at the programmatic needs and how do we, how do we handle and put facilities in place to handle the growing enrollment. And then, yeah, that's about it. And this, you know, this would be a project that would be going on through, you know, towards the end of the fiscal year. And there's some work to be done before we even get to this. And there'd be plenty of opportunity for, you know, collecting community, the voice of the community, and to get a lot of feedback in terms of what, what folks are looking for in that, that campus. So, yeah, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Baxter, thank you. I don't see anyone in the audience with a question at this time. I appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Some point of clarity on this one. You're recommending funding to the stabilization. This also requires two-thirds majority vote.
Article thirty-three, accept the rear Sylvia Way parcel as a gift. It would allow the Board of Selectmen, after conducting due diligence, to accept a seven-acre parcel of vacant, unimproved land in the rear of Sylvia Way subdivision twenty-seven-a. The parcel acquisition would link and preserve adjoining town-owned open space parcels, and the Board of Selectmen recommends. Ms. Agia, yes, please. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Yes, I just want everyone to know that the parcels that you see outlined in black are parcels already owned by the town of Dayton. And the parcels that are highlighted around their perimeter are parcels that we've been looking at long-term to potentially, obviously, preserve open space and potentially look at some type of a conservation area or trail system with the new growth that we've seen on Pine Street. So this has been in discussion with the Land Use Committee for many, many years. Ironically, the parcel that is fully highlighted, colored in, was a key parcel because it connects all the parcels to the north. The HOA at Sylvia Way contacted me directly and said that they had this parcel that was available and wanted to know if the town was interested in it. So obviously, no in the background. I obliged, and the discussions began, and here we are. So this would just close the, the loop in the puzzle, so to speak, of getting parcels acquired. Obviously, this one's free of charge, minus the attorney fees, and will, will, it'd be a seven-acre parcel to help create that conservation area that we, we think is needed.
How much are they paying on taxes on those?
Very little. It's a, it's a drainage. It was, it was retained for a drainage lot.
Right.
So I believe the taxes are just a few hundred dollars. I can get that number for town meeting, though.
Right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Karen, Article thirty-four.
Proposed update to flood hazard overlay district. Proposed update to flood hazard overlay district so that all development in the floodplain overlay district, including structural and non-structural activities, whether permitted by, whether permitted by right or by special permit, be in compliance with the Massachusetts statewide building code and Department of Conservation and Recreation regulations. All continues compliance with, also continues compliance with applicable National Flood Insurance Program requirement. insurance program requirements. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Article 35.
Article 34 will require also a planning board recommendation.
Yes.
And a two-thirds vote.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Article 35, I think that same applies also.
Correct.
Article 35, proposed update to retreat law, zoning bylaws. Bylaw update would incorporate language that 40 feet of street furniture should be continuous so that it is in harmony with the zoning bylaw, lot, furniture, and definition. Uh, so, there's been a question whether it's, if you have 20 feet here and you have other land and 20 feet over here, whether you can have a retreat lot. This is to kind of solve that whole issue. The Board of Selectmen recommends.
Thank you. Article 36. Pleasant Street roadway acceptance proposes to formally accept Pleasant Street as a public way in the town of Dyton. Pleasant Street discontinued by the state in the mid-1920s, but there are no records of town formally accepting the road and the town needs to show record of formal acceptance in order to qualify for federal and state grant funding. Pleasant Street at Muddy Cove Bridge replacement funding. The Board of Selectmen recommends, and I see that Mrs. Gulat is here this evening, and Mrs. Gulat, I wanna thank you, uh, I wanna thank you for discovering this and bringing it to our attention. Yes?
I'm concerned about the wording. I believe it should be, (sigh) to accept Pleasant Street as it is currently laid out. Um, I see Mr. Ferry's on Zoom. Mr. Ferry, do we have the plans drawn yet for the, uh, for that project? Think about the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge and how we had to have Delano.
(inaudible) Bridge and how we had to have Delano lay out the bridge.
Lay out the plan. What's that?
(inaudible).
I, I do not yet, and the language that goes with it, I can call for that and have it before the town meeting, if it's available.
Can't do that. Can't do that.
So, yeah, the Article 36 as currently written, um, reads, "To see if the town will vote to accept a roadway known as Pleasant Street as laid out and discontinued by the Massachusetts Highway Commission on June 29th, 1925, um, uh, on May, on May 18th, 1910, and on September 29th, 1909." Uh, so, we do specify in the motion that as it's laid out.
Mr. Ferry, you still there? I'm thinking about the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge project and that's why I asked this Center Street had never.
You cut out, I didn't hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. When we were working on the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge, it was discovered that Center Street had never been accepted by the town of Dyton. As you'll recall, we hired Delano and Company to do the layout for that area and when it came time to go to town meeting to get the vote, it was to accept Center Street as currently laid out, which was, that was based on the plans that were drawn by Delano. So, my question is, with the work that's been done on this project so far, do we have a current layout of Pleasant Street, at least in the area of the bridge in Muddy Cove?
Yes. Yes, we have a layout, I believe, within 200 feet, um, of both sides of the bridge.
All right, then.
I, I don't have possession of that, but Mr. Mullin is correct and he should have been language with it.
Okay, so, um, I think we need a, an amendment. I wouldn't go through all of that stuff about.
You can't amend this here. That'd have to be on the floor. Mr. Dingus?
No, that's why I'm asking. I, I just, I'm thinking. Uh, Mr. Moderator? All right, I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay.
A simple motion to accept Pleasant Street as it's currently laid out for the project you're talking about.
So, yeah, like in that, that language was in a draft, like in a draft form article, that language has actually since been updated and very much streamlined, uh, so we don't even have all these dates in any.
Okay, so what is gonna be, what, what are we actually gonna read?
Ms. Brady has it.
All right. My concern is we don't want any little dates or anything to mess things up, frankly.
Disagree.
And very simplified.
Yeah, because this has been reviewed by the legal, too.
Okay, so the only amendment I would propose, it's reading this way, "To see if the town will vote to accept Pleasant Street as a public way of the town or take any action relative thereto." My only thought about an amendment is to see if the town will vote to accept Pleasant Street as currently laid out as a public way. That will reference the latest plans that were drawn.
Mr. Dingus, so we can coordinate that, can you do that or should Mrs. Gulat do that?
Uh, it would have to be made from the floor. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if you understand what it is I'm trying to do. It's just more clarification.
Would you mind doing that on the floor?
No.
Well, we're gonna need to understand what the difference is and how is it either expanding or limiting scope of the article, or, I, I can't make a determination. I would assume that actually adding the word currently laid out is actually, it could be expanded if we don't, how is it permanently laid out? Are you providing that?
We have the plan. That's why I asked if we had a plan.
So, so, but the updated plan, like, and we can talk about this offline as well, but the updated plans, the updated plan that we currently have from the design and engineering firm doing work on the bridge, uh, like, uh, I give for the bridge, um, and then I believe with 200 feet of the bridge on each side, um, it doesn't, I, it doesn't deal, it doesn't deal with the layout of the, of Pleasant Street in the totality. Um, and the layout of Pleasant Street in the totality is, uh, uh, you know, is much more significantly involved. Um, that does, and that would go back to the 1909, the 1910, and the 1925 days. So.
Right. And this falls in line with what we did for Center Street. Center Street as currently laid out, we didn't say from the bridge to anywhere. We had to address specifically the area of construction. The state required this and that language was part of the discussion that I had with them and said, "Tell us what you want us to approve. We've got the plans, we're all set. What do you want the people to vote on?" And that's where this came from. And as currently laid out was just a further clarification that we have new plans or current plans. So, it, it's just a further explanation.
Do I have the current plans to the town in advance with this, with the law?
We have the plans. I can tell you going into town meeting for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge, we didn't have to present all the plans and all the diagrams. We did strictly motions, one after another.
But how's the town gonna know what current layout means in advance of town meetings? Right?
It wasn't required for Center Street for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge. Again, I'm only trying to follow what we have had to do for bridge projects because (laugh) we've got a few streets that have bridges that weren't accepted streets.
This is not speaking to that, this is speaking to accepting of Pleasant Street as a public way.
Are we allowed to present anything to the public in regards to a layout or handout?
Yes.
So that they can see what we mean specifically?
Yes, we are.
That might be a quick solution to that, so they have something they can actually look at.
Explain currently laid out.
Um, I believe Superintendent Ferry might have had his hand up, so to speak.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes, I, I could not hear the moderator's comments, so it's just clarification so we're ready. Would we have to present an amendment on, from the floor, correct?
Uh, Mr. Ferry, what the proposal is, that there will be a, um, let's say a reduced-size plan or a diagram so that if the amendment is as currently laid out, people will have a piece of paper that shows them what currently laid out means, which is sort of a reduced-size plan that we already have.
Correct, correct. Was we not, we're not proposing to take or change any boundaries, the existing plan just shows the current boundaries as laid out.
Correct, and it also shows that we have had a plan drawn currently, that this isn't going back to many, many years ago. I get it. No, thank you. Thank you. Does that work, Mr. Moderator?
We'll have to reply to that again. I don't, because of the fact, I, because of the fact we're not defining what difference is between assessing it as a public way, as, we never assessed what it's today or back in 1910.
The other thing we don't want to give the impression is, as a public way, without stating there are, as currently laid out. We don't want people to think that they're accepting Center Street from Main Street to the Somerset Line as it was in 1920.
But that's what they're, based on this and based as presented, that's exactly what it reads. You're accepting the entire Pleasant Street, so that's what, what are they assessing all of? I don't know what that changes. You have not given the residents enough information to make a determination of what the amendment's going to be amended, that's the problem. I don't know if it's expanding the scope or limiting the scope. I, I can't make that assessment either, I have no idea.
In accepting Pleasant Street for this project, we are limiting the area of Pleasant Street we are talking about. It's that section where the bridge is with, where Muddy Cove comes in.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not what the Warren article says today.
Well, I get a different warrant.
I'm gonna suggest, yeah, I'm gonna suggest that since it's been 97 years, 1920, that maybe we hold off until the fall, uh, meeting and address this. I mean, we waited 97 years, we can wait a little longer.
The only problem is, is it going to impact grant funding and state approval for the, the bridge project? That was my question.
So, the, so the instance of that is, we knew, um, from the, from the mid-string, uh, when we started this process and based on the timeline by the Veda Group, our consultants, uh, that we would be, uh, you know, that we would be trying to get into town meeting, uh, with the potential that we wouldn't have all the information, oh, here. Uh, uh, that being said, uh, like I, oh, you know, and we've been having offline conversations with council on this, oh, you know, and on the acceptance as recently as this afternoon, uh, so we can make sure we get this right. Um, and, I mean, I should, um, have an update, uh, like in the next day or so, whether it actually might be easier in best, uh, to go to a fall special telling.
My understanding is the, all of Pleasant Street was not recognized as a public way.
Whole street never been accepted.
So, if we accept the street, the whole street.
If we say as currently laid out.
As it's currently laid out, that will cover every change that has been made from 1920 to the present and we don't have to worry about the one little section with this bridges that we're trying to repair.
And if the public.
So, we'll do the whole Pleasant.
If the public questions, like Mr. Moderator is saying, the section, we can explain, we had to have that section drawn because of this project, okay?
And modify.
Uh, um, and your question about funding? If an opportunity arrives, arises and we haven't done this, yes, it could hold it up simply because we were forced to do this on Center Street because federal and state funds cannot be used on anything that has not been accepted. And by the way, when the time comes for land taking, we're gonna have to take the river bottom or the cove bottom or whatever that brook, that exit that goes under there, it's just like we had to take the river bottom up to the Berkeley boundary because it's considered that somebody's gonna own it. But, um, when you said council, did you talk to Attorney Gay?
Yes.
Okay. Remind Attorney Gay the language he gave me for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge. That's my only, that's the only reason I'm raising this, is I know what passed then and he explained it and got this all done, so I just wanna make sure this is gonna work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, just to close that out, um, so, yeah, uh, let's see, yeah, we are having an active conversation with council and will, and will know more, uh, like in the next day or so, whether we, uh, you know, and council, like, is confident based on the information that we have, uh, whether we can go, uh, whether we're able to move forward with this for Monday night, uh, and we will update everyone accordingly, if that's okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Article 37. Mr. Karen, could you take Article 37?
Absolutely. The Planning Board proposes to amend the solar bylaw to protect the town from overdevelopment in solar farms. A number of restrictions have been put in place to protect the town and its residents while also being fair to solar companies. In addition, energy storage systems, i.e. battery storage systems, have been explicitly defined as well as setbacks determined in order to secure public safety concerns. It must be noted that rules and regulations utilizing the recent standard, recently approved standard operating procedure as a foundation is currently being drafted. Extensive research took place within the Planning Board and other town departments, including lot sizes, setbacks, noise levels, fee structures, resource replacement fees to compromise what is presented. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Thank you. Article 38.
Article 37 just will require a two-thirds majority vote and a planning board recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Article 38, proposed increase to senior property tax exemption. Proposes to increase senior property tax exemption from $750 per year to $1,000 per year for qualifying seniors, qualification established in statute at General, Mass. General Law Part One Title IX, Chapter 59, Section Five. Massachusetts Light Management dot gov. Sixty, yes, 61 Dyton seniors presently sought this exemption this past year. Board of Selectmen recommends if the 61 Dyton seniors apply again, it will be an additional $15,250 that will, that the taxes, the revenue has to be increased for the rest of us. I think it's a fair amount to help the seniors.
Absolutely.
Keep them in the houses, keep them in Dyton, so I'm supporting, the Board of Selectmen recommends this.
Article 39, proposed update to the kennel bylaw. The current bylaw places costly burdens on an applicant to obtain a special permit from the ZBA to obtain a residential kennel license. The proposed update would amend the bylaw to allow the applicant to have a residential kennel license as a matter of right if the location has a minimum lot size of 35,000 square feet. If the lot size is less than 35,000 square feet, the applicant will be required to have a public hearing through the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article. Mr. Karen, Article 40.
Article 39 will also require a two-thirds vote in amending the bylaw and a planning board recommendation as well.
Um, so, um, so, so Article 40 is a resident petition, um, and going back just, um, uh, you know, as a point, like, as a point of clarification, the, uh, the resident petitions haven't been, uh, uh, haven't been sponsored by the town, um, so, uh, so when we begin these forums in October, uh, like, uh, we haven't provided summaries, uh, we haven't provided summaries on resident petitions, so like, I just wanted to clarify why there was nothing there.
Okay. Uh, I, okay, if not gonna do it, that's fine.
Um, so, but if you wa, uh, but if you wanted to read it, Selectman Karen, that's all, but I just, that's.
No, if we're going to wait till the fall, is that what you're saying? You're going to wait till the fall?
So, no, in this. So, no, in these summaries, I haven't provided a summary of the resident petitions.
Right.
And I didn't do that at the prior fall, at the prior fall special town meeting either.
Right.
But if you, but if you wanted to read what's in the warrant, that is more.
Sure. You don't have it up there?
No, I'm sorry.
Right. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Dyton bylaws, Article One, Section Six, by deleting it entirely and adding a new Section Six as follows. Existing language, Section Six. If an article of the warrant has once been acted upon and disposed of, it shall not be again considered at the meeting except by a two-thirds vote. New language, we read, Section Six. If an article of the warrant has been once, has once been acted upon and disposed of, it shall not be again considered at the meeting except by a two-thirds vote. Said article may be, may only be reconsidered prior to motion to consider the next sequential numbered article on the warrant. And we can do this?
So, I, so, so like I have talked, I have talked to, I've talked to council repeatedly on this resident petition, and they, and they have said yes, but it would require a two-thirds vote in order to be approved.
That's correct. Okay. But isn't that picking and choosing out of the rules?
Ah, yeah, like of what rules out of the Cushing's manual.
Right.
Oh, yeah, like, or actually adhere to and, or then further specified, yes. But, and I did raise that question with them.
And he said, or they said, two-thirds vote would still do it?
Yes. So, yes, and the reason I, oh, you know, and in these presentations, I don't try to summarize, oh, you know, is, oh, is I don't want to go, oh, you know, is I don't want to go down a path or have the town go down a path, where we try to summarize.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, what a resident might, oh, you actually feel is intent.
Okay.
Oh, you know, of an article. I just wanted to provide that explanation.
Mr. Karen, Cushing's is a bylaw.
Right.
It was established through a bylaw. It's been modified.
Has it?
Unofficially.
Okay.
It has been modified, but not officially. The official bylaw says Cushing's. There's an attempt currently being made to, in essence, modify the bylaw. So for that to happen, it would take a two-thirds vote. So if the people vote two-thirds to amend the bylaw, which in essence is amending Cushing's, they can do that. So basically, what they're doing is, they're not just amending Cushing's, they are amending the bylaw that says Cushing's will be.
So we already have a bylaw in place that is already amended, that's already amended the reconsideration within Cushing's amendment. The two-thirds vote on reconsideration of denying Cushing's, that is our bylaw. That's what we're mending. We're mending our bylaw that already amended the reconsideration definition within Cushing's.
So has, had it already been?
That is correct. The town voted in 2001, don't quote me on that.
Okay.
That we require a two-thirds majority for reconsideration.
Right.
That already amended Cushing's. That is not.
Oh, oh, okay. No, thank you.
This is further modifying our bylaw.
Okay. No, thank you.
For the town's issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
To act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced as said meeting, here will fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid.
Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have anything they would like to add under public input before I ask for a motion to adjourn? I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. Those of you who attended, it's a breath of fresh air. We've spent a great deal of time and effort going through, working with FinCom on the budget for the town of Dyton. It's good to see some people have come out to take and help us with that process. Thank you.
But, so, yeah, so, yeah, on that, on that note, Mr. Chairman, we do have Peter Roach, who has joined us, and he's been on the Zoom for the whole time, the chairman and the FinCom. Peter, I want to thank you as well.
Next slide.
Do you have anything to add, Peter, on the budget, any warrant articles from the FinCom perspective?
I guess the only, the only thing when you're going through, the only other point maybe to make, but there were no questions on it in the school, when we expect reimbursement, but other than that, I think that you had to put together a great presentation.
Thank you, Peter. So one of the, one of the things that Chairman Roach just asked is, when do we expect reimbursement through E and D, I believe, from DR, which will, which will help us backfill the $150,000 we're taking from stable, we're proposing to fund the feasibility study from stabilization. And I did talk to the school district today, and they do hope they actually submitted their excess in deficiency for certification to DR last week, so I'm sorry, to DOR last week, the Department of Revenue, and they do hope to have a certified E and D figure by the end of this week. Peter? Oh, yeah, I can follow up on that, because that is important to all of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, then, if we, we're going to be voting, hopefully it passes to take $150,000 from stabilization.
Yes.
But we're not going to take that out. We're going to wait for the E and D money, because how will we put that money back in that if we take it out?
Yeah, so.
We'd have to bring it back before the residents to put it back in.
Yeah, so, so the proposed, the proposed school feasibility study would be funded at the annual town meeting through stabilization, which is a two-thirds vote. Then, like, then, then the E and D, then the E and D funding, then the E and D funding that we'll be receiving from the school district by the end of the fiscal year, so by June 30th, that will turn over into free cash. So then, so then, when we come back in the fall to special town meeting, like, we will, we will take at least, but we will take and propose at least $150,000 of that go right back into stabilization. And then we would pay back, then we would pay back stabilization for what we borrowed from it at the annual town meeting next week to fund the feasibility study.
So normally, we, at the special town meeting, we, we put some money into the stabilization funds.
Right.
So whatever we put in should be an additional $150,000, like, right?
Yes.
Because we're taking it out.
Yes.
We want to keep that money in there. We're going to get reimbursed for it. Then we should be putting additional money into stabilization.
And it was my understanding when we met with the FinCom, that was almost a gentleman's agreement.
Yeah.
Well, FinCom, Board of Selectmen would strongly support that.
Yeah. Can, can the first, the first thing we need to do is put the 150 in, in whole, and then look at whatever, in addition to that, we will put in over there.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter.
Mr. Ferry, do you have anything further to add? Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullin, unless you have any further business for the.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and thank the residents.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Section.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you very much.